Start with page one, Bill seventy-nine dash twenty-two, Mr. Lawrence Richardson.
Good afternoon, Chairman Jones, members of the council. The administration is requesting a supplemental appropriation in the amount of one hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars to our surplus funding and family planning reproductive health grant. The additional funds will be used to hire additional contractual staff, as well as advertise our services and to serve our clinical equipment, purchase new equipment and expand our telehealth services, as well as purchase additional medical and office supplies. The one hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars is coming from the Maryland Department of Health, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions or comments from the members? Thank you very much, Mr. Richardson. Next, we'll move on to page four, Mr. Terry Hickey, Bill eighty dash twenty-two. Yes?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We have one speaker registered for.
That's right. I'm sorry. You're right. We do have a speaker.
Um, it's.
Brig. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Right, Ms. Dumeay. I cannot find her on our attendee list. Let me just see if she is on by phone. She is not on by phone either, and her name is not listed, so we can come back. I will keep an eye out on the list to see if she is in attendance. She is for the bill, though. I just wanted to comment.
Okay, okay, okay. I know we have, when I can tell, we have two telephone people called in.
That is correct. I just checked the phone number that she submitted on her registration form, and neither of the callers are that phone number.
Okay, so Brig, if you're out there, call the council, and we'll give you an opportunity to testify later in the meeting. On that note, we'll move on. Thank you so much for stopping me. Mr. Terry Hickey, Bill eighty dash twenty-two, page four.
All right. Well, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the council. I'm here today on behalf of the administration requesting county council approval of a supplemental appropriation in the amount of eighty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. Baltimore County DHCD has been allocated this additional funding pursuant to an amendment to an FY twenty-two grant agreement between the county and the state that authorizes this additional funding to come from our existing state homeless solutions program, or HSP. The purpose of this new additional funding is to allow the county to provide, as needed, emergency housing-related services, such as housing navigation and rental assistance, to Afghan refugees and their families who have been referred to the county by designated refugee service providers and who may not have the funding to resolve on their own when the need arises. The funding is unique in that it's restricted by the state to this specific purpose, and there's no matching requirement. The funding would allow DHCD to serve approximately three to five households for a period of approximately four to eight months. We've not yet had a need to provide these services and don't, at this point, have an idea of what the real scope of the issue out there is. This was essentially provided to the county by the state if we encounter refugee families working with service providers that cannot afford to help them when they get into rental distress. So it's preventative money for a very limited, specific purpose, to avoid the county having to use its own rental assistance or homelessness dollars. And I will leave it there and address any questions if there are any.
Any questions or comments from the members?
Just one comment, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Batoka.
So, thank you. So, Mr. Hickey, I'm totally supportive of this. I just read some disturbing news last evening. What I believe to be disturbing is that Congress is looking at discontinuing providing an avenue for Afghan refugees or Afghan folks that live in Afghanistan and helped our our military and our assets there, helping them come to the U.S. And so it was rather disturbing to me that we're discontinuing, or Congress, the House primarily, is looking at discontinuing a program for folks that helped us out when our military deployed in Afghanistan.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments? Yes, Chris?
Mr. Chair, Ms. Dumeay is on. Just wanted to let you know if you wanted to go back to seventy-nine briefly.
We will, soon as we wrap this one up. Any additional questions or comments from the members?
I have one comment.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman. Where are you? Oh, there you are, Councilman Artel.
Hi, Councilman.
Hi, Director Hickey. I had an encounter with a homeless family, you may know this, last week in Towson, and we don't seem to really have a way to deal with some of the issues we're having already with homeless. And I'm for this bill, but I'm just wondering how we deal with some of the homeless people we already have, and we don't seem to have a way to. And in particular, the family I had had a school-aged child here in Towson, and all we have is a cold weather shelter that's at Franklin Square. And if the family goes there, the son can't go to school in the morning. And I don't know, it just seems like there are some gaps in what we're doing here in the county as far as dealing with. It's a heartbreaking situation to me, and then we see this kind of, you know, additional money that's being provided. And again, I'm sure this is needed, but so far, my first week on the job has all been social services items and mostly about either homelessness or people getting ready to be evicted from their homes elderly. And I'm quite concerned as a new person that we don't seem to have a handle on how to deal with some of these issues other than often seems like the brick wall. Well, I only bring that up because, you know, I'm venting a little bit.
Sure.
Here, so.
Well, these are big, these are big questions. I do want to say publicly, I appreciate the fact that you had reached out and let us know about that. Our team has been in communication with them. We've confirmed that their son and their family, they are working with the appointed homelessness resource officer at their school, and we've been able to offer some other options. So I do want to make a point, though, because these are big challenges. The reason for this funding was in case we end up with families in crisis who are refugees, we do not want to have to divert existing funds from existing programs, and the state was sort of helping us through that, so. But otherwise, I look forward to working with you on these bigger questions.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Great. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Benjamin?
No, that was Councilman Young.
Oh, oh, Councilman Young. I'm sorry.
I'm sure Mr. Benjamin has a very deep and, you know, appealing voice. Just wanted to, Director Hickey, just wanted to ask, want to glad that the state is providing funds, just a reminder for myself to where where did the funds come from, from the state?
My understanding is that these state, these funds are passed through federal dollars that came through Treasury. They are related to recovery. They are specifically for the use of the support of refugee families who have been settled, then find housing, then find themselves in housing distress, which obviously a lot of ifs have to happen before we get there. It came through a very specific window at the state, which is our housing support dollars that comes in through the continuum of care. Basically, the state had federal money for this purpose. They wanted to get it out quickly, so they used the existing COC conduit, because there was also a concern that some of the smaller counties would spend their whole budget on new issues. So that's where this came from. It's federal through the state to us for these emergency cases.
Safe to say if your staff had notified or been aware of it, we could have missed out on these funds?
No, well, we were all given a proportional amount. We're in regular contact with the state office that does this, and actually, the original plan was to ask the local COCs to absorb this aid if need be. Baltimore County and the others pushed back, saying we need additional resources if these cases come up. And again, that's an if. And this money followed. So this money really is a direct result of the advocacy of Heather Sheridan and the different COC leaders back to the state.
Sounds proactive. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, any additional questions or comments? Chris, why don't we go back to Bill seventy-nine dash twenty-two? Ms. Dumas?
Certainly. Are you there?
Hey, everyone. My name is Bridge. My pronouns are they/them. I'm with eleven ninety-nine SEIU, and I do have to maybe apologize. I'm also supposed to be testifying at a Baltimore County Council meeting that's happening right now, so if I hang up, I'll be back in two minutes when my testimony is over. I'm really excited to see a lot of familiar faces here today, and even more excited to see some new faces. So I wanted to go over a couple of different proposals for coalition structure for us to agree on today. The suggestion comes from what's been really successful in other coalitions that I've been a part of, so.
Brig, Brig.
Other coalitions that I've been a part of in the past, which is having a bi-weekly, meaning every other coalition meeting.
Wrong.
And on the off weeks, having committees.
Ms. Dumeay.
Issues. So we have a proposal for three committees, an advocacy committee, which would lead up all of the policy work and, you know, lobbying and all of that good stuff. Committee that would work on social media, digital mobilizing, as well as, you know, more traditional comms.
Tom, I, hold on one second.
Okay, Brig, I'm not sure we talked about the right issue, but we are Baltimore County, and we welcome your testimony. We just want to make sure you're saying the right thing to the right people, because you indicated that you're also on the line with Baltimore County. So I'm not sure if that was someplace else, probably, Anarundo. I don't know. I know we have the same charter, so we run on the same schedule.
Talked about this proposal with earlier, and I will be back as soon as I can, and thank you all so much for your patience with me. Thanks very much.
Okay, moving right along to Mr. Leonard Howie, page seven, Bill eighty-one twenty-two.
I really don't know how to follow that, Mr. Chair.
You're talking to the wrong audience.
Good afternoon. The matter before the council today is a contract between Mariner Marketing Communications and Baltimore County to provide for creative rebranding for the Baltimore County Tourism Enjoy Baltimore County Initiative. We issued an RFP seeking qualified firm to assist the county with a complete and creative tourism rebrand. The result will be the creation of a new brand, logo, corresponding collateral for digital, print, and a new website in order to increase destination awareness to help drive tourism visits and overnight stays to the county. The RFP's scope of work included media services, creative development, website design, and account management. We evaluated seven qualified proposals and chose to award the contract to Mariner Marketing Communications, Inc. Mariner's strengths include experience in the tourism industry and working with government partners, a strong understanding of Baltimore County's physical assets and regional demographics, and most importantly, their proposal demonstrated a solid administrative and organizational structure that will greatly assist in carrying out the desired outcome. The best part of this, we believe, is that, as we always love to say, it's other people's money. This is our funds. So we are very excited to bring this contracting opportunity to the council for consideration.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Howie, and I know we have a couple of speakers. So are there any questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman Marks?
Thank you very much. Mr. Howie, I appreciated the opportunity to talk to your staff about this, and I'm certainly very interested in highlighting the beautiful Baltimore County waterfront, along with many of other communities in Baltimore County. So thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for all your support.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Batoka.
Just want to comment on the conversation I had with Mr. Howie today. We talked a little bit about branding and the importance of branding. And so I shared with Mr. Howie, I said, well, what if we branded ourselves Baltimore County is for lovers? And that that one is already taken. And the reason I bring that bring that point out to my colleagues is because Virginia has done such a great job at branding that it's easy to associate that word with Virginia. And so it kind of made me feel more comfortable than I was after that little discussion with this with this proposal, because branding works, and appreciate that discussion, Mr. Howie.
Well, thank you, Councilman Ren. You know, I think the real benefit, one of the real benefits about this entire process is that through wide stakeholder engagement, you know, we're going to get, hopefully, something just like that, something that really signifies Baltimore County, identifies us from amongst many, and it becomes a tagline that we'll be able to use for years to come.
Okay, any additional questions or comments? I know we have a few. Let me see, let me make sure. We have a speaker? And I'm going to take a point of privilege and say, Ms. Brig, if you're out there and you want to give us the proper testimony for that particular item, I will open the door for you. So, starting with whoever, Chris?
Yes, it is. It is, and we are discussing Bill. The testimony will be on Bill eighty-one twenty-two.
Okay.
Are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, thank you so much for your flexibility. I'm actually here to speak on multiple bills today, so instead of you having to listen to me all night long, I'm just going to do it at once, if that's okay. With you all, my name is Bridge Dumeay. I'm the political coordinator with eleven ninety-nine SEIU, United Healthcare Workers EAST, and I live in Councilman Catches' district. Eleven ninety-nine is the largest healthcare workers' union in the United States, representing over two thousand members who live in Baltimore County, as well as hundreds of members who work in Baltimore County but reside elsewhere. And we want to, of course, welcome our new council members. We're very excited to work with you, Councilman Artel and Councilman Young, as well as all of the council members that we have been working with over the past several years. The first piece that I would like to support is dedicating surplus funding to family planning and reproductive health. As healthcare workers, we support all budget allocations to invest in our healthcare infrastructure. Additional funding can increase the quality of patient care and improve the lives of healthcare workers. At a time when reproductive choice and access to reproductive care is under attack nationally, it is critical for localities to ensure that reproductive healthcare is accessible to all who need it, and funding is a critical component of that. So we urge the council to vote yes. Moving on to workforce solutions to address homelessness, Bill eighty-one twenty-two. As a labor union, we fight to establish workforce training opportunities across industries, particularly in healthcare, which, as you all know, is experiencing a massive short staffing crisis. When eleven ninety-nine SEIU members are asked, what are your top concerns you want your elected officials to address? Unaffordable housing and homelessness are consistently mentioned among their top priorities. While additional legislation is needed to reduce the cost of housing, particularly to mitigate skyrocketing rents, in the meantime, Bill eighty-one twenty-two can help people who cannot afford housing to get the necessary training they need to advance in their field and ultimately earn higher wages. So again, we urge the council to vote yes. Council Bill eighty-two twenty-two, senior information and assistance. This bill is particularly important to eleven ninety-nine members because we work in long-term care facilities all across the state, particularly in Baltimore County, so we support allocating additional funding to the Department of Aging to improve the overall quality of patient care and resources that patients are able to address. Finally, I would like to speak extremely briefly on eighty-five twenty-two, the Administrative Charging Committee. You are going to hear excellent testimony from other members of the Baltimore County Coalition for Police Accountability, so I will in advance say ditto to all of that, and just really want to highlight that we want to make sure that the Administrative Charging Committee, along with the Police Accountability Board, remains civilian-led. It's critically important for community members to feel that they are represented represented on the ACC and the PAB in order to rebuild trust, accountability, and transparency between the community and the police. And we really want to express, you know, concern about having the ACC full of a lot of retired police officers. We want to make sure that there's a good balance between community members who are not affiliated with police, and that's going to be, again, critically important for repairing trust and making sure that the boards are not biased towards police officers who may commit misconduct. And so, yes, we support forming an ACC, and we strongly encourage that it be civilian-led. Thank you for hearing my testimony. I know I went over a couple of minutes, but I appreciate you all.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Councilman Catch?
Yes, Ms. Dumeay. I I work with Kathleen Dumeay. I assume she's a relative of yours?
It is very likely that she is. Our name is specific to Quebec. We've joked about that we're probably fifth cousins, twice removed, or something like that, but no official relation.
Okay, thank, because she always says she had relatives in my district, so I thought you were the relative. Thank, thank you.
Well, she always answers my calls, and I think it's because her staff thinks I'm a cousin or something like that.
Right, I see. I see. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Okay, next speaker, Ms. Mel Castwell.
That is the only speaker, Mr. Chair, we had for Bill eighty-one.
Okay. Moving right along to page twenty-five, Mr. Leonard Howie, you're on again. What did you guys do that one? Did you guess?
We covered that with Chairman.
Excuse me?
We caught, and look, I think we covered that bill.
Yes.
Yes.
You covered the workforce solution one as well? Yep, did that, did that. Okay. All right, well, we move right along to page ten, Ms. Laura Riley, Bill eighty-two twenty-two.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, if I might interrupt, Mr. Howie, since he is on, he also has fiscal matter one on page twenty-five.
That's what I was just talking about, so.
Yes, sir.
Did you do that one already?
No, I did not.
Oh, you talked about Maryland Communications.
Oh, no, yes, yes, that's the one I did. I did that one.
Okay, so you did that, and you did Bill eighty-one twenty-two with the workforce solutions.
And my mistake. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
That's okay. That's all right. You sort of threw them together. So why don't we just move on to Bill eighty-two twenty-two, Ms. Laura Riley, page ten.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. Good evening. The administration is requesting a supplemental appropriation of state funds totaling ninety-two thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars to the Senior Information and Assistance Gifts and Grants Fund to increase the amount originally appropriated. At the time we submit our county budget, we don't always know what the state's going to give us, and so we did a best estimate, but we ended up getting more, so that's why we've come back to appropriate ninety-two thousand additional dollars. These funds will be used to support the salary and benefits of one new full-time human service associate position to provide information and referral, along with the other staff in our MAP offices.
Any questions or comments from the members?
Yep.
All right, here, Councilman Batoka?
Ms. Riley, is this one-time money, or is it a continuous fund source?
It is expected to be a continuous fund source. As the State Secretary likes to remind us, our money is allocated each year through a grant. However, it has been stable, and we anticipate that it will continue.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to page thirteen. Director Steve Lafferty?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt again. I'm being told that we still do have eighty-one twenty-two to deal with the bill.
Workforce solutions to address homelessness. Mr. Howie?
Okay, here we go. Department of Economic Workforce Development received a workforce solutions to address homelessness award from the Maryland Department of Labor in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. The source of funding is the U.S. Department of Labor, and funds must be expended by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. This funding will allow us to assist individuals experiencing or in danger of experiencing homelessness to obtain job skills and find employment. The sub-grant will fund a homeless services career consultant who will collaborate with a job developer and a homeless services case manager and work as a team, supporting participants to achieve their career and training goals. Referrals will come from homeless service providers, and services will focus on a continuum of care and holistic, and a holistic approach to working with the same participant concurrently. The goal is to serve seventy-five individuals over the grant period.
Okay, any questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Catch?
Thank you very much, Mr. Howie. How are you today?
I'm well, Councilmember. How are you?
Good, I'm fine. Thank you. Question, we're talking about people who are homeless, unemployed, or may become homeless because they're, may become unemployed. Is that what we're talking about here?
Well, they may become unemployed, and quite frankly, this is where a lot of coordination has been taking place with by Frank, with me and Director Hickey, our two organizations. We have overlap in populations, and my, my, my core population on the workforce side, some of them need housing, and some of his population on the housing side, they need jobs. So this is really an effort for us to work together more closely and ensuring that nobody falls through the gap. So, yes, looking for jobs, but also those who are experiencing or about to experience homelessness.
The individuals that you'll be working with, do you work with private partnerships or with, who do you work with to try to help these individuals get a job?
We get referrals from all sorts of sources, but I would say that one of our primary sources is CAN, quite frankly. They are, are, are deep into workforce and housing issues, and we receive a lot of cross-referrals, and and we really do collaborate closely. In fact, just physically, our, our, our buildings, our East Point Job Center is literally around the corner from CAN's offices, so we have a lot of coordination. They are a primary nonprofit partner in the county.
Now, do you with this effort, is there any funding available for, let's say, clothing for homeless individuals who, let's say they have a job interview, clothing for a job interview, is there money available? Let's say that they have issues with their teeth, they get their teeth fixed. Let's say that they are, have never had a job, don't feel comfortable. Do we have the ability to have them escorted to work and have somebody stay there with them for the first, let's say, week or so? I know programs like that that do work. And I was just wondering, as a government working with a nonprofit, do we have that flexibility?
I think we'd have to look into that specifically. I do, I can report that just earlier this fall, the State Department of Labor announced that there'll be a new grant coming down shortly that is intended only to provide the wraparound services, the type that you're talking about. And those services are not restricted like we have in our core workforce program. We owe the Workforce Innovations and Opportunity Act funding. It's really meant to address, Councilmember, the exact situations that you mentioned. You have people who need assistance, just, you know, getting to work, being able to dress for work, and, and being able to function. So I think as a state, we're going to be really thinking about all of those support services that are needed. But in the meantime, some of the more immediate needs, like clothes, I know that some of these nonprofits, they I know that some of these, um, nonprofits, they do provide that. We actually have a, um, a, 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 a closed closet for interview purposes. That, um, that job seekers, uh, can partake in our, in our East Point office. Um, so we probably have to do a little bit more exploration to see the true magnitude of those support services, but that is definitely on everybody's radar.
Mister Chair, may I be acknowledged?
Yes, uh, if Councilman, uh, Catch is done.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let her interrupt me, go ahead.
I was going to support your position.
Thank you.
And, uh, uh, Catch, knowing that, you know, my, most of my career has been in human services. If individuals are also, uh, customers on the healthy human services side. There's a, a piece of, of, of job development and readiness, connectivity on that side as well. That, that, that does support individuals going to work. I, I would tend to, uh, believe that if this is a homeless situation, that those individuals are connected to. Our healthy human services side of government operations as well. So Mister Howie, I, I believe that talking with, um, Dr. Branch and Mister Millsbaugh. On the, um, family investment services and supports. There, there's a, a potential collaboration on that part because these are clearly, uh, programs that exist in, in. That portfolio of work as well. That's what the family investment program, um, services tap into as well.
Thank, thank you so much.
You're quite welcome, sir.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments?
Here I have one comment.
Go ahead, Councilman Hurtel.
Director Howie, um, thank you for being here today with us. How, um, extensively are you work, or do you believe you'll be working with CCBC? For training for, um, some of these potential recipients?
Um, CCBC is our primary educational partner and trainer. Uh, we work with them closely on, on everything that you can possibly imagine. They are, they are actually our out-of-school youth training provider. Um, so we couldn't, we contract with them, um. We are co-tenants, um, in our job centers in Hunt Valley and Mantlestown. We, we're working with them on many projects, um, across the board. So, uh, we are, they're, they're on our workforce development board, so we are truly attached at the hip.
Okay, great. Um, one other question, do we have the ability? It seems to me that there are some people that are in situations where they're in a, a job that doesn't, you know, it doesn't pay a living wage. But they're stuck there because they're trying to provide for, you know, to pay their rent or. You know, keep their children housed, that kind of thing and. Often when we have training that could possibly get them to that next level, there's a gap in the fact that. They can't give up their day job, um, to get trained often. Or, you know, they have impediments to getting the training that would get them to that next level to make them self-sustaining. But because, you know, there's no real way to help them. Do, do, do we have any, I guess what I'm rambling about here is do, do we have a way to potentially help people? Maybe with a stipend or, or something like that in order to get training they need so we can. Get them to be self-sustaining and thriving.
I think the short answer is yes, there's a, um. Uh, there is a couple of major grant opportunity or funding opportunities that we are partnering with the state on. Uh, to help provide those good jobs for county residents, uh, that will allow them to transition from where they are to something better. And within that model, uh, stipends are built into that. The program is not scoped out completely yet. Um, the award was just made late summer and once the state really, really, uh, really gets moving. Uh, we'll be able to move forward, uh, more with that concept, but there is that recognition and that's what I was mentioning to, to Councilmember Cash as well. The, um, uh, it, I think it's a positive thing that we're at the point where, um, the federal government recognizes that. We have to pay attention to those, not just the wraparound services, but we promote training all the time. But as you indicated, you have to leave what you're doing sometimes in order to do that. And, um, if you don't have the ability to make ends meet, uh, that prevents you from seeking those opportunities. So, uh, we're, we're excited that these funding streams are coming down for this purpose, for these purposes. Uh, now comes the work to actually see how that's going to work. So it is a strong possibility, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, any additional questions or comments? All right, thank you, Mister Howie. Now. Let me see, we took care of you, correct, Ms. Riley? Page ten, Bill eighty-two, twenty-two, ninety-two thousand dollars. Now we're moving on to. Director Steve Lafferty, Bill eighty-three, twenty-two.
Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Sure.
I, I'm also here this afternoon with our Deputy Director Amy Nantate. I'm, uh, asked that you allow her to address both, uh, both this bill and the sub, the next bill.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, um, Chairman Jones and members of council, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This is a request for a supplemental appropriation, um, for Maryland Historic Trust's. Certified Local Government Grant Funds in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars. The grant will support the cost of hiring consultant. To assist the Department of Planning's Preservation Services staff to update the county's historic design guidelines. Which were last updated in twenty-ten. The update to the guidelines will address recurring issues that come up in Landmarks Preservation Commission meetings. Specifically adding a section about non-contributing resources in the county's seventeen historic districts. In addition, other updates will include making the document more user-friendly. With fewer long paragraphs and include more illustrations and photographs. It will also include an improved, an approved materials list. And provide additional information regarding installation of solar panels as well as historic signs. As I mentioned, the updated guidelines will provide a resource to the commission to use in decision-making. And for the department to use when reviewing alterations to any historic structures or properties. The grant period is May second, twenty-twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. No county matching funds are required. I'm happy to address any questions and, uh, Ms. Caitlin Merritt, who is from our Historic Preservation Services Division is here as well.
Okay, any questions or comments from the members?
Mister Chair.
Yes, Councilman Marks.
Hi, um, Amy, I found that one of the best resources for community associations is, is the Citizens Guide to Zoning. Um, are we looking at updating that as well?
Um, we're aware that it does need some updates. I'm not sure where it falls in our current workload, but, um, if it's something that we could work in at some point, we would be. Um, happy to do that because we do know that it is such a heavily used resource.
Yeah, excellent. I mean, I think that and, uh, the My Neighborhood app are just so useful. To a lot of, uh, residents and community associations, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments from the members? All right, uh, Amy, you want to move on to Bill eighty-four dash twenty-two?
Sure. This bill is for an adjustment.
Sixteen.
Yes.
Go ahead.
This bill is for an adjustment to the Comprehensive Zoning Map, CZMP. Uh, Planning Board Public Hearing Schedule and the Timing of the Staff Recommendation to the Planning Board. Uh, in the current CZMP process, after petitions for rezoning are filed in September, October and November. Our planning team works with other agencies and the administration to develop what's called the staff recommendation. That recommendation is noted on the Log of Issues, which currently is published in February. Which is prior to the Planning Board Public Hearings, which are held in March. The proposed change in this bill would adjust the timing of the hearings so that the hearings take place in February. Then the staff recommendation would be published in the Log of Issues in March. Thus allowing staff the benefit of the public input in formulation of our recommendation. The Planning Board would still issue their recommendation as usual in April. So I'm happy to address any questions.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Mister Chair.
Uh, Councilman, uh, Patoka?
Thank you, uh, thank you, Amy, and thank you, Director Lafferty. We've talked about this, uh, over the past week and I've also had discussions with, uh, some of your predecessors. Spoken with Pat Keller, uh, with, uh, Jeff Mayhew and some others that are. Strong planners that, that still live in Baltimore County. And I, I have hesitation on this and, you know, I think community input, no question. We should use as much as we can get, but one of the things that I always found to be a valuable tool in the CZMP. Is the perspective from a professional planner. Using the skillsets that each of you learned in planning school and based on your experience. And even before it got to, um. To the community for community input, like what is the, based on your professional experience? What is the best use of the land based on what the applicant has, has submitted? And, and what are, what's good land use policy that's applied to that application? And then allowing the public to. To see the recommendation and to, uh, then respond to that. Now I understand exactly why you would, you would want to have. Uh, input from the pu, public prior to making the recommendation, but I feel like. That you, that there's a tool that gets lost in that, that shifting of, of the schedule. Said that, I think there's a solution and I saw some, uh, email traffic from Pat Keller, who I, I think is an outstanding planner. Uh, as well as Jeff Mayhew, Bob Bendler. And one of the things that, uh, and I've talked to Tom Boswick about an amendment that, uh, could potentially. Um, create a middle ground on this, and that is that. The set of information that the planners, I understand, as I'm, I'm understanding the legislation correctly. The planners will, um, set, uh, will deliver a set of information. On, on the, uh, CZMP, on the applicant. Not on the applicant, but on the land you said the applicant proposed. And so, uh, what, what my amendment asks and gonna, uh, I guess codify is. To have that information easily accessible to the public so that they can actually see the analysis. To see why the people use their professional expertise to come up with this recommendation. And also see that and, and certainly you did it, I think the Planning Department did an outstanding job. Last CZMP with the Log of Issues, uh, with each phase of the Log of Issues and even. Um, identifying individual comments, I found that to be extremely helpful, uh, as Councilman, um, Mark said earlier. Uh, the mapping tool was, is very, is a valuable tool as is the Citizens Guide to Planning. So all of these things, along with the lens of the perfection, if we. And I guess, um, in a long-winded sort of way, I'm just asking that we make public and we make easy to find on our website. Because sometimes we do make things public, but they're hard to find on the website.
Councilman Patoka, can I add?
Evaluation, yes, I'm sorry.
So, um, we have a form that we use to do analysis. And that form, along with any comments and agency comments, was made public last CZMP. So when you click, when you click on the map and you pulled up the Log of Issues, they were off, there were, or you clicked on the map and you clicked the issue. There were a variety of reports that you could click through. So last CZMP was the first time that we had, we made that public, so it was public last time. The analysis report as well as agency comments we received.
Uh, but that was done prior to the rec, was that done prior to the recommendation? Or was that after the recommendation?
That was, that came out with the recommendation. At the same time.
So is that going to come out without a recommendation on it? And just go to the Planning Board?
It would be, it would be the same, it would come whenever our recommendation is issued in the Log of Issues. At the same time, we would upload those reports and the analysis to the website. So if our recommendation comes out in March, that point, that day, that point in March, those things will be uploaded to the website then, so that it's all there at the same time.
In the hearing.
Uh, Councilman, I think the intent though is that the information report would be provided. Prior to, to the camp, to the Planning Board members, and so it would have the basic information that's been gathered up to that point in time. The, the separating the recommendations from the actual analysis, if you will. The recommendation would come after the public hearing, whereas all of the. The Planning Board will go forward having information that's been evaluated and gathered as to each of the issues.
Would the, um, the set of information, the analysis, that, that's going to be made public? Before the, before the public hearing?
Without a recommendation, so it would not have the full analysis, it wouldn't have the planning staff's evaluate assessment. It would have all the information that's been received up to that point in time.
That's the missing part for me is. What are, you know, we under, you know, we do have an understanding and. My department has a good understanding of community sentiment. And community sentiment is sometimes a little different than. What best land use? What the best land use application might be. And I guess that's where I'm struggling is, you know, what is a planner's perspective? What is the best planning practice? Not that we should be going in opposite direction of community interest. But I do think that. Uh, I'm, I'm concerned about losing that, that tool of, uh, of just a straightforward land use analysis.
Well, I think as you and I previously discussed, Councilman, uh, we, the, the staff and the planning board may hear information. At the public hearing that was not known previously, that could influence the professional determination or judgment of the planning staff. At the same time, there may be comments from the public that, you know, staff does not feel. Just, you know, changes what they believe to be the best, uh, recommendation for future land use. Uh, so I, I think as you just aptly put it, you know, we, the planners do work with and. And take into account community considerations because that is a factor in making future land use determinations. And that's, that's part of the skill and judgment that has to be exercised. So I, I don't think that the public hearing diminishes in any way that, uh, the exercise of that professional judgment.
Uh, Mister Secretary, give us that of the amendment that I discussed with you, how that fits in this?
Uh, I, I, I do, um, uh, Mister, um, Patoka. We discussed, uh. We discussed doing, I think, two things, um, one was adding language, uh, to. To the sentence in the bill, uh, on page two of the bill, lines thirteen through twenty-two, which states. That during the period of public notice, the Director of Planning shall make the information report of the Planning Board. And any accompanying maps and exhibits available for public inspection in the Department of Planning. Uh, I think you, you would wish to also require that that, uh, information report be available on, on Planning's website. Or it, or in a manner that is conspicuous and user-friendly to the public. And also, secondly, requiring that the information report itself, uh, include the Planning Department's assessment. Of the proposed zoning map, uh, based on, I believe what you termed best planning practices. As recognized by the American Planning Association, uh, and its affiliates.
Director Lafferty, is that something that if the language were changed, you'd have a level of comfort with?
I guess, Councilman, I'm not so sure. Are you saying the analysis short of actually making a specific recommendation? Because doesn't the analysis itself lay out the recommendation?
The analysis leads to the recommendation, you would think. I guess, Amy almost said that we did this last time around, I think. But this puts it in, if we're going to make an official change to the, you know, we're going to codify a change to the schedule, that we also enshrine our commitment to public notification as well.
Enshrined to public notification, I think, is basically provides what Ms. Mantegue just described. Except that the log, the log previously included the recommendations when it was posted. So that would be the distinction here.
If I could, Councilman Patoka, let me jump in and give you a little assistance, if you don't mind. Right now, the process is the professionals at planning make a recommendation unencumbered by anybody other than their professional knowledge and judgment. Then the public weighs in, then the Planning Board makes a recommendation based off of what the professionals said, what the public said. Then we, the County Council, have a hearing all around the county, and we hear from the public. And then we, the County Council, make the final decision based off of what was said by the public, what was said by the Planning Board, and what was said unencumbered by the planning professionals. And then we make that decision. And I guess what I believe Councilman Patoka is saying, and I tend to agree with him, if you are going to listen to the public prior to making your determination, then is your professional opinion then tainted? Because why do you need to hear from the public if you've gone to school, you've gone to extensive training and certification to be a professional planner, and you can't, or you feel like you need to hear from the public before you make a determination? Because if you're hearing from the public, does that then change your opinion? Does it change your professional opinion? I mean, there's enough community input in the process before a decision is made. So the question is, if you were to hear from the public, does that take away from your professional opinion?
The answer would be no, Councilman, because the information that comes from the public may impact the factual basis upon which the professional decision is being made. So if we're making recommendations without having adequate information, we've really not made a good recommendation. And yes, can the Planning Board later change that? Yes, can the Council, again, use its judgment to change it? Absolutely. But the point is to best ensure that the staff have all the information that's needed in order to make a professional judgment about what the proposed land use should be on a given piece of property. I don't think it taints it whatsoever. I think it could help better inform it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman Crandall?
Thank you. I'm looking at this as a it's a procedural change, but the public is invited to engage in the CZMP process throughout the whole process. So as soon as an issue goes in, we, as council members, we see it, the Planning Board sees it as soon as it goes in, and of course, the planning staff sees it as soon as it goes in. So I'm not as troubled as you are with the fact that the public gets a chance to weigh in sooner rather than later on a more official basis in giving in giving the public the opportunity to address the planning staff before they make their recommendations. So I think this is kind of a I think this just sort of opens the process up even a little bit more. You know, Chairman, you and I have been through, what, two of these so far, and we know how grueling they can be. This is going to be our, no, this will be our third one.
Our second one. Just going on to third, you're right.
This will be our, this will be our third one together, and you know it's not easy. But I don't see where enabling the public to engage earlier in the process would hinder the process, because the planning staff recommendations are going to be what they are, the Planning Board recommendation is going to be what they are. And ultimately, as you stated, it comes down to us, it comes down to the County Council members to make our final decisions. So I don't see any harm with hearing opinions from the public at the very beginning of the process as to where the public is now, which is in the, sort of in the middle of the process. And then they lobby us anyway. So either the landowner, the community people, whomever, they're lobbying us the whole way regardless.
Well, Councilman Crandall.
I don't see where this process, I don't see where this change in the process upsets the nature of balance that we have going on.
Well, Councilman Crandall, I'm just going to ask, if the public's input does not change the professionals at Planning's opinion, why is it necessary that they hear it before they make an opinion? And at the end of the day, we're the ones who are charged with making the opinion. And it's helpful when you have a professional opinion over here, unencumbered by, you know, the public's opinion. Because, believe me when I tell you, it's not like we're not going to hear from the public and we don't value their opinion. But you're trying to make a determination, the determination somewhere, in my opinion, the professional opinion should be there, unencumbered somewhere, where I can say, this is what professionals think based on their training, education, and experience and certification, and that weighs with me to a certain degree. Of course, there's plenty of time for the public to weigh in. But to me, it diminishes the professional planning's opinion, because now you're telling me that the professionals' opinion will be swayed by what the public says. That's what you're telling me.
But Director Lafferty just said that the professional opinion would not be swayed. But you can't tell me when a CZMP issue comes to fruition, where it's even being discussed, that people aren't already calling the Planning Department, calling the County Council, calling the members of the Planning Board. So what difference does it make?
Well, I guess I don't think you get an honest, I don't think you get an unencumbered opinion from the professionals. You get an opinion from the professionals based on public input.
So are the professionals that are in our Planning Department, you're calling them professionals, so we agree that they're professionals at what they do, right?
Yeah, they went to school for this.
Are they not also public servants?
They are public servants.
Well, then they should be available to the public.
I'm not saying they're not available to the public. All I'm saying, and I guess I'm not going to, I guess we will keep it going. Only thing I'm saying is, there's a process right now where the professionals have an opinion, have an opportunity to provide us with their unencumbered professional opinions. And that plays a part in the process. It's not the sole factor, but it certainly plays a part. Then the Planning Board, having heard from the public and saw the professionals, they make an opinion. Then we hear from the public, and based on what we hear from the public and all the other information, the planning staff, the Planning Board, the public, then we make the ultimate decision.
So
So there's plenty of opportunities for the public to weigh in.
Mr. Chairman, why would a planner on the planning staff in Director Lafferty's shop? Why would they not issue a professional opinion? They're not elected, they're not trying to get re-elected. They don't, you know, they don't have any they have no other agenda other than providing what their professional opinion might be on a certain matter.
Well, that's my point, Councilman Crandall.
Well, yeah, but you're saying that the public can't engage them because somehow they'll be so influenced? Well, how is the public going to influence them when they're just, not just, but they are public servants?
I don't think that has anything, listen, the issue is, if I were to go to my attorney and say, is this legal or not? Give me your professional opinion. I don't want my attorney to say, let me hear from the public first, and then I'll get back to you. I want my attorney to do what they think, to tell me what they think is based on their legal and what's based on the law. And if we have respect for the planners, then we should be able to hear from them unencumbered. And then that plays a part. It plays a part.
I would like to think that they would be unencumbered, no matter what we decide here on the Council.
Well, they're the one asking for the public input before they make a decision. How long have we had it the other way around? How long have we had this process? Councilman, I mean, Mr. Boswick?
A long, very long time, I mean, decades.
So now we're going to change it. To what purpose? To me, listen, I can live with it either way, but what I'm telling you, Director Lafferty, is if you can't make a professional opinion without hearing from the public first, then you're going to diminish your weight when I make a determination, because I'm going to hear from the public repeatedly. And sometimes I know the people who scream the loudest comes in and say they represent all the public when, in fact, you know, they represent themselves or a small minority. And I just think your professional opinions should not be weighted by what people say or don't say at these processes. But I'm going to push it on and guess, ask, is there anybody else that have any questions or comments? Councilman Patoka, you're certainly welcome.
Sure, thank you, Chairman Johnson. Thanks, Councilman Crandall. Maybe it's just the planner geek in me that likes to see it. You know, the planner evaluates, what is the existing use? What is the requested use? Does it fit into the master plan? Does it fit into the surrounding zoning? And public input certainly is a part of that. Sometimes I like to see those areas evaluated as it moves forward through the, through public hearings, which we, the Planning Board holds a robust set of hearings, we, the Council, we hold a robust set of hearings. I just felt, and again, maybe it's the planner geek in me, that that one set of data that comes out first, I always found to be valuable. And I think that maybe we can resolve this, is if we have that data, be very, very public, as public as we can make it, and very accessible, that that may be a way to resolve what Director Lafferty is trying to achieve, what we've heard.
And can I add one more thing for you, Director Lafferty? And at the end of the day, at the end of the day, before we make these determinations, oftentimes we sit down with the community planner and go over everything that's transpired before we make a determination. But at the end of the day, we're the ones that make the determination. Go ahead, Director Lafferty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Certainly, this is not intended to diminish the Council's role whatsoever. And we begin talking to members of the public, attorneys, property owners, throughout the summer before issues are even filed. So we are continually engaged with the community throughout the process. It is our belief that having, making sure that we don't miss anything before we exercise professional judgment is critical, which is why we're requesting this. Councilman Patoka, I think it'd serve us well if you and me and Ms. Mantegue could get together before the vote to see if the language that you're proposing achieves your goal and at the same time helps us achieve our goal. So we can hopefully do that over the next couple of days.
Fair enough. Sounds good to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments?
Chairman, I have one, if I may.
Go ahead, Councilman, or two?
I'll try to keep this brief, because I know we've been talking about this for a while. Timing, the timing of the hearings, so currently, planning has hearings when?
The Planning Board meets in March.
They meet in, okay, but then they, so they make, currently, the recommendations were made, and then they have public hearings that you hear, and aren't they in the spring?
In March. The public hearings are in March, and then the recommendations are forwarded on to the Council that does hold hearings, I believe, in May or June, probably in June after the budget.
Okay. All right, so we would just be moving the hearings from March to February?
Yes, sir.
Correct? Okay. All right, that's all. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? There are none. We will move on to, thank you, Director Lafferty and Ms. Mantegue.
Thank you very much, Councilmembers.
Sure. We will move on to page nineteen. Ms. Rogers?
Thank you, Chairman, and again, good evening, Councilmembers. The administration is requesting a technical amendment to align our charging committee, this is the administrative charging committee, with the actual state laws. This bill affects a technical amendment, which is required to change certain aspects of the language that is in our bill, Bill 2422, because the Maryland Police Training and Standards Commission approved regulations that were emergency regulations. By the time our bill was passed, the proposed regulations did not comport with our regulations. Now, mind you, this does not change the content of the bill in terms of what the criteria around selection for members of the administrative charging committee. This expressly adopts the recommended membership requirements as they are set forth in COMAR 12-04-09-04 D through E. It does not change the content, but it sets forth what we're asking for in terms of the the technical amendment is to align our local legislation with the state, the disciplinary standards and regulations that are set forth by the state. We're out of alignment right now.
Can you please explain what exactly is the technical change? Because we received an awful lot of email, and I know we have quite a few speakers, at least three, waiting to speak on it, and you say it has nothing to do with the criteria for the people?
It does not, sir. We're not asking for any change to the criteria. We just have to align with the state. Earlier, one of the speakers talked about being, who the membership is and not having an overabundance of police officers, former police officers, et cetera. This legislation that we're asking is a technical amendment to put in place and align us with the state. The, um, as, as the, um, fiscal note describes, if you look at, uh, COMAR twelve, uh, point oh four, point oh nine, uh, point oh four, D through F, this is what is outlined in COMAR. We're just trying to align with COMAR. We're not asking that anything be changed, we're not in alignment right now with COMAR. It is, the, the, the criteria, um, is what it is, there's no, we're not submitting anything that changes anything from what the state has, has suggested in how we are selecting the individuals. There's no change.
Any additional questions or comments, uh, Mr. Boswick, you want to add anything?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I'm sorry, I was, I was actually looking at the note, you know, to make sure I was familiar as well, and, and, uh, not really, I, I, Ms. Rogers is, is accurate, the, the, it, it's really more of a sequencing issue, uh, because the, you know, the, the state required the counties to, to basically adopt the PAB and the ACC within certain time periods, but they had not completely finished up their regulations, uh, on this. So, uh, now they are essentially, they have completed their regulations, as Ms., uh, Rogers alluded to, uh, those, uh, those COMAR regulations, particularly, uh, par- paragraphs D through F, and they outline the, 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 the items that must also now be part of Baltimore County's ACC requirements. So that's what this bill does, and those requirements, D through F, are, are set forth in the fiscal notes exactly as they are written, so I, I don't want to go through every one of them and waste everybody's time, but they are, it is an alignment thing.
I know some of the, some of the emails that I've, uh, received had things on there about, uh, people being custodials, uh, of records, and they would have a right to, I think they were confused, maybe, to, uh, not give up records of misconduct.
This is, this has nothing to do with any of, of that procedural work. This has to do with COMAR alignment with COMAR twelve point oh four, point oh nine, point oh four, D as in David, through F as in Frank, which talks about the selection. It's not about the procedural activities at all. We are out of alignment because we were required to have everything in place by July of twenty-twenty-two. Well, the final, uh, regulations were not completed at that time. So we went forward with our legislation to, uh, comply. But now that the final, uh, regulations are out, we have to align our local, uh, legislation to that. All of this, the, you know, articulation of procedural things is not a part of what this bill, what with this technical amendment is about. The, the, um, fiscal note on this lays it out explicitly as to what this bill is about.
If I may, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman, I mean, uh, Mr. Benjamin?
I just wanted to, um, you know, reiterate the points that, um, Madam Mayo and Mr. Boswick said. This concerns, uh, just, um, ACC membership eligibility, uh, membership, uh, requirements, and it's, in essence, adopting, um, the, those particular, um, regulations, uh, in COMAR. That's what's going on here.
Okay. Well, all right, any additional questions or comments? I'll give everybody, you know, you certainly have a right to weigh in after we hear from the public. All right, now that we've had it all explained, let's hear from the public, Ms. Chris?
Certainly, Mr. Chair, first, uh, registered speaker is Roland Patterson. Mr. Patterson, you-
Yes, I, yes, I am here. Good evening, uh, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Petoka, my councilman, Madam CAO, and all of the council. I have, uh, neglectfully sent my written testimony on behalf of the NAACP to, uh, your office, Mr. Chair, and to the offices of Mr. Petoka, um, and Mr. Crandall, because I had those addresses. I should have just sent my testimony to the council office, and I recognize that in retrospect, I apologize. I simply wish to say that the branch, I've heard what the CAO has said. I've heard what Mr. Boswick has said. The bill is not worded in the limited fashion in which they are speaking. The bill says that civilians, uh, are entitled to be, uh, appointed to the ACC. The, uh, PAB chairperson has already appointed a former, uh, police officer, a retired police officer and current FOP member to the ACC. We think that this, um, counteracts the purpose and the mission of the Maryland Police Accountability Act. Due process on, on behalf of the police would simply call for them to be represented. This is a quote-unquote citizens' review board by another name. Um, and so we think that for the purpose of citizens who have been excluded from the system by the law enforcement, uh, officers' bill of rights, uh, prior to its repealing, this is a step, uh, backward. It isn't that you, your language is moving us backward. It is that your language is vague, and the others, uh, the executive and his appointees are calling, in our view, for police officers in the state, in the capacity of retirees to man this board. That is not serving the purpose of Anton Black, and therefore, we ask that you would amend, hear us on that, that you would amend this provision, we're closing, that you would amend this provision so that it specifies the absence of former police officers, thank you for your time.
Uh, Mr. Patterson, uh, before you go, uh, I'm just going to ask you a question, because we've been through an awful lot of, uh, debate on this particular issue when we were formulating the bill. And, uh, one of the issues came up was we had certain people that did not want anyone that were ever, ever convicted of a felony or even a high crime or misdemeanor to serve on the board. Then we had other people that did not want anyone that were a former police officer or a relative of a former police officer, uh, to serve on the board. And I think we, or the, or the council, decided to take the position that if somebody came along that were vetted, and it was a public process, uh, we have people that have committed felonies and that have turned their lives around, and it's been ten years, fifteen years, and we had police officers. So the question I ask for you is, do you think we should exclude police officers as well as felons? Or just former police officers? And then do we exclude their wives, ex-wives, children? How, how far do we go, Mr. Patterson?
I think that the vetting process can serve the purpose when it relates to, uh, relatives of law enforcement officers. I think that the vetting process can serve the purpose when we're dealing with persons who, uh, have had criminal offenses, um, in their past. I think it's difficult, though, when we're weighing the conduct of police officers to say that we can vet police officers. I, 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 I just think it is, um, or, or former police officers. So that is, you add, your question was framed, how far do I think we can go? I think that we can vet relatives. Uh, I think that we can vet, uh, those who have had run-ins with the law. I don't think that we can vet police officers.
Okay. Uh, to be clear, just be clear, I, I, I can't even remember how many members of the board we have, but one is a retired police officer. And we have pastors and all sorts of people from different walks of life. Ms. Rogers?
Um, Mr. Chair, I just want to, again, uh, reiterate, what we're trying to do is align our local legislation with COMAR, and COMAR section, subsection D one sets forth ACC membership eligibility, requiring members to be at least twenty-one years old, a legal resident or citizens of the United States of America, a resident of the county, of good moral character, and free from bias that may negatively impact the integrity of the ACC. So if you go over to the, um, language that was already in the bill, I mean, the things that we're adding are in, is capitalized. Line ten says, "Two civilian members selected by the Police Accountability Board", and, uh, line eleven, "Three", you know, with this three, this "two civilian members selected by the county executive". The current, um, member that was selected by the chair of the Police Accountability Board, that's, was the chair's choice. And that individual was selected for the PAB and vetted with the council, so they are an eligible member for consideration. And the chair selected this person.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Ms. Bel Castro, uh, next speaker.
Certainly, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson.
Our next speaker is Peter Richkus. Ms. Richkus, you are now panelist, you may begin your testimony.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you, Ms. Bel Castro, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to add first my congratulations and best wishes to the newly elected and the recently re-elected members of the council. We are all vested in your success. For the record, my name is Peter Richkus. I'm a resident of Towson, District Six, a co-coordinator of Indivisible Towson and Indivisible Towson's liaison to the Baltimore County Coalition for Police Accountability. Both Rebecca Young, in yesterday's PAB meeting, and Sam O'Neill, in an email, have explained that this bill is clarifying the PAB's ACC membership requirements, as Ms. Rogers described, and thus amending the original PAB legislation, which was Bill twenty-four twenty-two, and that it was needed once the legislature's guidance to the twenty-twenty-one Police Accountability Act was amended by the related provisions of the Public Safety Article in Chapter one forty-one of twenty-twenty-two. I would like to suggest, for this and all county bills, that more specificity and plain language be used, so the deliberations and intentions of the council are more transparent and understandable. It should be easier for the public to find this information. This bill's reference to COMAR is referring to the Maryland Police Training and Standards Commission of the Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services, and written from a law enforcement perspective, to quote, "Establish a civilian review process for allegations of police officer misconduct involving the public", end quote, "including civilian review of law enforcement investigations and the making of disciplinary actions" and recommendations. Adding civilian involvement to ensure greater accountability and transparency was deemed necessary by the General Assembly, and it is clearly needed in those instances when law enforcement officers violate their oath and the law. While the Baltimore County Police Department has many, many fine officers and support personnel, the statistics show that important aspects of the county's policing record put us at the bottom of all Maryland jurisdictions. What is needed and called for by Anton's Law is a civilian perspective, not a different law enforcement viewpoint. The ACC's job is to review the findings of a law enforcement agency's misconduct investigation, to determine whether or not to administratively, administratively charge the police officer who is the subject of the investigation, to recommend discipline against police officers, if appropriate, to review relevant police body camera footage, and the like. Having a former police officer or an immediate family member in that role presents a serious conflict of interest, no matter how sincere their intention to remain objective. At minimum, it presents an obvious appearance of a conflict of interest, especially to those portions of our community who have suffered disproportionately from police misconduct.
Ms. Richkus, if you could wrap up your comments, you're over three minutes, please.
I'm doing that right now, thank you, Ms. Bel Castro. I ask that you please take your time in considering this bill and the public's input. Baltimore County can take a leadership position in this matter. The state role, the state, uh, language is the floor, and I urge you to do so. The ACC is an important tool to help us do better. Thank you, and I wish you all happy holidays.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro?
Certainly, Mr. Chair, our next speaker, uh, final speaker is Erica McDonald. Ms. McDonald, you're on as a panelist, you may begin your testimony. She may need to unmute herself.
Yeah, can, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Chairman Jones and council members, my name is Erica McDonald, and I'm a resident of District One. And, um, I'm wanting to talk to you about the bill tonight that outlines only the baseline of requirements that are required by the state, but may be extended by the counties, um, just as with the Police Accountability Board legislation. The intent of the Maryland Police Accountability Act of twenty-twenty-one was to address police misconduct with civilian oversight, including the Police Accountability Board that oversees and reports on the police misconduct process, and importantly, appoints civilians to the Administrative Charging Committee and Trial Boards. The bill outlines only the baseline, like I mentioned. Police misconduct remains a problem in Baltimore County. According to the IID Annual Report, Baltimore County ranks top in the state for police-involved fatalities. And in the past five years, there are well over a thousand reported use-of-force incidences in Baltimore County which disproportionately impact black and brown residents. Baltimore County community unsuccessfully advocated to restrict people with a direct connection to law enforcement for participating in the Police Accountability Board. And as a result, not only was a retired police officer appointed to the board, but he has now been appointed to chair the ACC, the Administrative Charging Committee. The proposed Bill eighty-five dash twenty-two, again, limits the participation of people who have been convicted of crimes in the past, but does not limit the participation of people influenced by the law enforcement commu- community. We must be clear that this will lead to the appointment to the ACC of people with connections to law enforcement and the FOP. The bill states that the county must disqualify people from serving on the ACC if they've been accused or convicted of a crime. That the bill does not also specifically disqualify retired law enforcement officers, for example, from serving is a clear double standard. It indicates preferential treatment of the FOP and bias against those who the PAB should protect. The purpose of the PAB and the ACC is to address this misconduct in our community, um, by police officers. The appointment of the retired police officer to serve on the ACC undermines the public trust that the police will be held accountable for misconduct. And having a bill or a law that requires the ACC to disqualify those- requires the ACC to disqualify those people would prevent the appointment that has already happened. So I urge you to pass a bill that ensures real accountability in police misconduct investigations by amending this bill to limit the participation of people with connections to law enforcement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. McDonald. Appreciate your testimony. And I believe that is it for our speakers. Uh, any questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Councilman Young.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to, one, thanks for the uh testimony from the advocates both the administration. I do want to apologize to Ms. Rogers if we didn't have a chance to talk about uh this beforehand. I just want to make sure, because it happens a lot when it comes to legislation from the um General Assembly. Once we pass something, then it gets sent down uh to who it's supposed to be addressing. The, we're setting the minimum standard, the, the General Assembly set the minimum standard, right?
Yes.
And we're trying to align with that minimum standard?
Yes, sir. The, the, the position that we came forward with in terms of um line nineteen and twenty and twenty-two, which are of course uh in all caps, aligns back to Comar uh twelve point oh four, point oh nine, point oh four, section D through F. This was a technical amendment. Um, what the advocates are, are um concerned about is legislation that previously existed and exist in our legislation now. Their concern is about who the individuals are, but the, it's, it's clear that the Chair of the Police Accountability Board, Accountability Board had the authority based on, on the, the legislation to appoint a member of the PAB.
Yeah. Well, I'm aware of that, but I, I guess I'm just trying to make sure in terms of the process where we're, we are submitting an amendment for the, there isn't a, an amendment in front of us to our current law. There are changes that were suggested by the MGA, but the MGA sets forth minimum standards. Our current bill above that, are we, I, we're not, I mean, we're not in line with because we passed our bill for the minimum standard we set, but are we, we're not below it, we're not below the minimum standard as of current.
No. If you look at, if you look at sections D through F, we're not. These are, these are the things that we uh uh considered when we did the PAB. We haven't, we haven't um appointed or even come forward with nominations, uh, at least from the uh county executive's level for the two recommended uh candidates. We haven't even done that process, but the technical amendment was needed because the um emergency legislation ends this month, so we had to align.
Got it. Okay. Appreciate the time. Thank you.
It, uh, thank you, uh, uh, Councilman Young. Uh, Ms. Rogers, are you saying that no one's been appointed to the ACC yet?
Not from, the, the, the only person who's been uh, uh, appointed to the ACC is the, one of the two civilian members from the, the Police Accountability Board.
Right. Okay.
And the Chair uh selected that person, the, the, the PAB uh Chair or designated selects two people and they have selected one. The county executive haven't, has not put forth ACC um appointments yet.
And I would just, I would note, uh, Mr. Chair, that the uh, it's my understanding that the PAB designated is not the Chair of the uh
Correct.
ACC.
No Chair has been designated yet.
Of the ACC?
Of the ACC, right.
Okay. Okay. Uh, any additional questions or comments?
I have one, Mr. Chair.
Yes, uh, Councilman Nertel?
Uh, this is just a curiosity question. Uh, the ACC, do we know how many members will be on that, a number of members?
Four.
Four? Okay.
Two appointed by the PAB. Right, this is Administrative Charging Room, two appointed by the PAB and two uh appointed by, let me make sure, have there are two civilian members selected by the county executive and two civilian members selected by the Police Accountability Board.
Okay.
You'll also have the Chair of the um as well.
Yeah, the, the, they will, a Chair will be selected, but
All of them, four. There's only Five, I think, altogether.
Five altogether?
I believe so.
Chair plus four.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, no, well, yes, and the Chair of the PAB selects, selects a per, it, well, the, a member of the ACC is the Chairman of the PAB or a person designated by the Chairman of the PAB. Then uh, uh, then it is um two civilian members selected by the PAB and then two civilian members selected by the county executive. I think, I think that's five.
That's five, yes, sir.
Yes. Okay, when you look at that, what, uh, Mr. Boswick, you're correct. But in terms of the, 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 the second person hasn't been selected yet and it is not our understanding that that person is, the person that has been selected is the Chair.
Right, uh, that's right.
Okay.
It's five.
All right. Uh, any additional questions or comments? All right, all right, let's see here. Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Now we'll move on to Mr. Pete Gutwold, page twenty-nine, Rat Eradication.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the County Council. The administration is requesting approval of two contracts with Pest Services Company and Orkin Regional Pest Management to provide integrated management service, pest management, pest management services to control, reduce and eradicate uh rat populations in the county communities on an as-needed basis. This is a after commencing after council approval would be for one year and then for uh subsequent years uh automatically. Um, the total amount appropriated or to be expended would be two point eight million over five-plus years or five years and four months. I would note that the, the funds are coming from the Neglected Property Community Fund, which is, the sources of funds from that is, is collected from non-tax liens and fines through our code enforcement processes. So that's where that money comes from. Um, I would just mention one other thing that we also, this, the contracts provide us a lot of flexibility to uh, to mo- move and uh, a- address issues throughout the entire county. Uh, as you know, we started out with a twenty-three pilot program, uh, communities. We have, we've upped that to twenty-five. We have created an enhanced program where we have different levels of way we will treat communities. One starts with education, the highest level four uh ends with, you know, an eight-week uh, um intense program, uh, treatment program plus stack and trash pickups to reducing the, the food source along with a maintenance program of treatment. So it ranges from a level one for just basically education and outreach to one-time, you know, one-time treatments uh and those types of things and then intensified treatment program. Um, and so I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gutwold. Any questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Crandall?
I just want to thank Mr. Gutwold and the uh, the, the administration for uh their continued support of this program and for uh expanding the program. Um, I've mentioned several times before the council that uh, when I first took office, we would receive anywhere from five to ten complaints a week on rat problems in communities and now we're down to maybe one or two calls per quarter. So this is a government program that actually works and the metrics are there to prove that they work. So uh, um, just uh, uh, just want to uh, thank every, everybody involved and thank you for keeping the, the program moving because it is making a, a, a quality of life impact um in our communities. So just want to leave it with that, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Crandall. I uh remember vividly the testimony of members of your community. They came out on the bus. They had big neon green shirts with no rat on the front and they handed out fake rats. And I still have it at home somewhere, fake rat. So scare somebody every now and then, so.
And you, you might remember the one that I, you might remember the one that I put on uh Councilwoman Bevan's chair and almost caused her to have a stroke.
I, I do remember, but I tell you, uh, what I will say this is, uh, that is a beautiful example of uh people uh soliciting the government for help and the administration in fact did so and we have been doing so ever since and to im- im- improve the quality of life of the citizens here in Baltimore County. So kudos everyone involved. Thank you, Mr. Gutwold and thank you, uh, Councilman Crandall. And it has grown throughout, yes, your community, but the West Side as well, the different communities who've asked for help. So it's a good thing. Don't know why everybody hate Mickey Mouse, but okay. Joke. Uh, any additional questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, just want to also, as Councilman Crandall did acknowledge, the fine work of Mr. Gutwold. Uh, I know my team calls on him uh, uh, pretty regularly and uh, Pete, you're always quick to respond, so thank you very much.
Okay. There's no more questions or comments. We will move on to uh, Ms. DeAndrea Walker.
Good afternoon.
Thirty-five. Good afternoon, Ms. Walker.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the council. Um, the administration is requesting approval of a contract with Raftellus Financial Consultants to provide financial uh services, including they will perform a third-party water and sewer rate review validation for us and also conduct a cost of service analysis for our Metropolitan District Fund. It will also uh do an analysis for us of our current rate structures. Um, and those, that analysis will be incorporated into a financial model, a dashboard that we're using uh to assist us in determining the impacts of our water and sewer rate methodologies. Uh, this contract will commence upon council approval and go through June thirty, twenty twenty-five. Or maybe extended, uh, maybe uh extended through the earlier date of us finishing this project. The compensation may not exceed one thousand one hundred eleven dollars during the entire contract period. Just for um some additional information, uh, this contract is uh helping us perform that cost of, cost of service study. We have a rate analysis that we're looking at to decide whether or not our different classes are equitable and this is needed in order for us to be able to facilitate those recommendations. I'll take any questions that you may have.
Ms. Walker, I guess I had a question about the one thousand. We, we, we spend in bigger numbers than that.
Did I say one thousand?
Yeah.
Except one thousand. We can't even buy a toilet seat around here for, we can't even buy a toilet seat for a thousand dollars around this place. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
One hundred eleven thousand for twenty-six, sorry.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, be recognized.
Yes, uh, Ms. Rogers.
Uh, you know, this is an area we've done an awful lot of work in, but one of the other things that the Raftellus uh team does for us, it is best practice and standard to have a third-party review of our rates periodically along the way. Um, when the administration began and we were briefed on water, the county had never had a third-party review to validate our water rates. Uh, major jurisdictions in across the country have a third-party review to ensure that our rate development is correct. So we had been working with Baltimore City, who has um a third-party review uh through Raftellus and we were able to do some of the initial work that we needed to do through our relationship with Baltimore City. But now it's time for us to, you know, move over and do our own independent third-party review. That's why we're coming forward with both pieces, the cost of service and the third-party independent review to make sure that we are, our rate structure and the rates that we, you know, must uh present through executive order every year are valid.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the members? Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Walker, and thank you very much, Ms. Rogers. And we will move on to page thirty-eight, Amendment to a Contract, Waste Management of Maryland. Ms. Walker?
Yes, sir. The administration is requesting an amendment to a contract with Waste Management of Maryland uh so that we can extend the existing municipal solid waste transfer and disposal agreements that we have. Um, this proposed extension is necessary while we conduct um an updated solid waste management contract uh to put on the street. Uh, the amendment commences upon council approval and extends to the contract uh through the earlier of the date in which we would execute a new contract on June thirty of twenty twenty-four. Uh, just for uh reference, this is a revenue generating contract for the county. Um, and another portion of the contract is where we plan to also exercise the contract's option for off-site disposal of Harford County's commercial municipal solid waste.
Any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none. Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Now we'll move on to page of forty-two, Contract with ASB Enterprises.
Mr. Chair, we are one in the same, uh, Ms. Walker and
Oh, I'm sorry.
We are one in the same, sisters in the spirit.
Okay. Sorry about that.
No problem. Um, the administration is requesting approval of two contracts, ASB Two Enterprises and RL Johnson Asphalt Paving and Ceiling Coating. Uh, these two contracts will provide on-call snow removal and salt application services for us. Uh, each contract will commence um upon approval and continue through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three and may be renewed automatically for four one-year periods. Compensation for these contracts together with all our other contracts, no removal contracts for these services may not exceed the amount appropriated for salt removal or salt application services during the entire uh approximately four year and four and a half month term, including the renewals. Just for reference, my FY twenty-three budget for snow emergencies totals seven point five million, which includes three point one million specifically for uh contractual snow removal services. I'll take any questions that you may have.
Any questions, comments from the members?
Chair, could, could I go back to FM four for a second? Is that possible? Ask one question. Um, I, I'm new, so I don't understand this necessarily. What, what is the situation with Harford County in this? Are, are we managing their commercial trash too?
So
Ms. Walker?
Pass through. Ms. Walker?
It is a pa- it is a pass-through contract that they used with us some time ago, many years ago. I'll say many years ago, there was an agreement with Harford County that we would uh dispose of their, use our transfer station to move their uh municipal solid waste.
Does that go into our landfill?
No, that's why this contract pays Waste Management to move it. It just, they just use our transfer station.
Okay, all right. So it's just a matter of, okay, great, okay.
Yes, sir.
And
And they pay us.
Right.
It's to be recognized.
Yes.
Um, just for historical purposes, Harford County contributed from a capital project side to the transfer station.
Okay.
They put money on the table.
Yeah, I just, I just
For us.
Good to know the history.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, any additional questions or comments? Uh, Lauren, uh, while we're on that Uh, Lauren, uh, while we're on that subject, uh, Lauren, did you have any comments on fiscal matter four?
I believe there's going to be an amendment to this amendment regarding the compensation for the Harford County piece.
Okay.
Something, if I may, Mr. Chair, um, we've had, uh, um, some communications, uh, about that, just what was brought to my attention. We're going to review, um, one of the attachments to the, um, uh, document, the fee schedule. And then if we need to make amendments, we can do so, but we're currently, currently looking at it right now.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? So let's see here. We went back in time to four. Finished up five with the snow removal. Now we'll move to page 47. Ms. Walker?
Yes, sir. The administration is requesting approval of a contract with Itron Incorporated to provide water meter inspections and repair services throughout the county. Um, this contract will commence upon council approval and will continue through June 30, 2023. Specifically, this contractor will provide water meter inspection and repair services, including services related to our encoder receiver transmitter devices and meter troubleshooting as well as meter replacement throughout the county. We, um, have approximately 1,300 meters that have been identified uh, that need some repair in terms of, uh, communicating the consumption data. Uh, so this contract will assist us in being able to repair those meters.
They, are they our meters or Baltimore City meters?
They're our meters.
There are. We pay for them.
Okay. And then the, then the people pay the bills to the city?
Yes, sir, because, uh, uh, state statute, uh, deems Baltimore City as the billing agent. This goes back to 1924, 1942.
Okay.
Some things, other things that we're working on.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, uh, Councilman Patoka.
Uh, just want to remind the council and the new members as well as, uh, um, members, um, that served last term. I believe we all passed a resolution, um, looking at the viability of a regional water authority. And, uh, it's something that, I don't know, it seems to become more pressing every day. I can tell you that my team, uh, addresses, as I'm sure each of your teams address, uh, quite a substantial number of, uh, water bill issues that are just, um, that don't make sense and, uh, we're continually trying to keep up with the, the demand of requests that come in for, um, incorrect water bills. It's a little frustrating because it's ba- basic nuts and bolts of government, uh, you know, we should, uh, charge, uh, based on consumption. And, uh, for some reason, uh, we struggle. I don't think it's our fault. I think it's something that we can uh, continually, continue to work on with our partners, but there may come a time when we may need to revisit that resolution. That, uh, the seventh, Tom, was it the 17th council?
2019.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you. Ms. Rogers?
Uh, Councilmember Patoka, please, uh, know that we are fully aligned. If you go to the, uh, report that was submitted, um, and approved by the county uh, executive and the mayor of Baltimore City in July of 2021, there's a whole chapter about re- uh, about governance models, the exploration of governance models and our ongoing, um, city-county work group. This is a topic that we have been working on since the report was, was, uh, issued. So we're keenly aware of the resolution. Uh, we are in, in, um, assertive conversations about governance structures. So more to come on that, but it is a hu- the, the chapter, I'm happy to send the chapter, that one chapter, because it's a huge document on governance structures that we are all having dialogue about.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I was the sponsor of that resolution. Um, it was a unanimous resolution. Uh, it, it's frustrating to see people at the state level talk about big ideas. And here's a big idea that both Republicans and Democrats can support. So I really hope the General Assembly moves on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh. Mr. Chair? Yes, Councilman, uh, Cat?
Yes, uh, Madam CEO, uh, or Director Walker. I know in some localities, uh, if a home is using an excessive amount of water that homeowner is contacted by the local government. Uh, do we have the capability to do that?
Yes, we do.
And we do that?
We do that currently. Yes, sir.
You do that cor- okay, good, good, because I, I know when the property tax bills come out and people had, uh, the city forgives people, uh, for large water bills. However, as when, with the county, uh, we don't, we don't forgive, uh, the use of the water in regard to the, uh, sewage charge.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, it's been an issue, uh, since I've been on the council the last eight years. So, I mean, has this program uh, gotten more widespread or, or what?
So, sir, what we do is we do reach out to the, uh, residents when we notice that there's been a large jump in their, in their water bills before we send out our bills to make sure, our sewer bills, to make sure that they're aware. As a matter of fact, one of the items that I'm introducing today is the Robert Half staff that we bring on to help us with that process. So not all times will we be able to adjust their sewer bills if the water is going into the sewer. If there's a link, a leak inside the house, there's appeal processes that we can follow, but that's why we reach out to the residents in advance to let them know, to tell us if there's something actually going on within your home so that we can uh, do a review of your bill.
So, so I, uh, in our home, if, uh, we have a leaky toilet, let's say, we don't hear it, we don't use that bathroom and it, it's, uh, going on for like two or three days, would the county then contact us or would it be on during the billing cycle?
No, not two or three days. It's if there's a huge jump, we usually use a percentage rate. Look at the analysis of your bills from the previous year. So if you see something, if we, I think our rate was, if it was a 30% increase or 40% increase on your bill from the previous year, we do a benchmarking and say, we're going to reach out to all of those.
Yep.
Residents in advance. That's how, that's kind of how we do it.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, be acknowledged.
Yes, go right ahead. I was just, uh, trying to figure out the year that we addressed this, but go right ahead.
Yes, and some of your legislation, but, uh, the good news is these are business processes and proactive steps that we have taken, that the administration has taken. We elected to do analyses before the tax bills come out. We start on this, uh, this time of year, January in preparation for July tax bills. And we have sent thousands of letters, couple thousand of letters, if we see anomalies from the last year's bill to this view. And I'm very pleased that citizens are very responsive. The residents get the, the letter, contact us and then we see if there was a problem. Now, um, Councilmember Catch and our, our new council members, we're happy to brief you on why if the city forgives certain, uh, water bills, the issue on our side with the sewerage and water distribution, because that's what the county charges on our tax bills, why there is a, a, a difference in the forgiveness part because it's where it happens. But I would love to, I mean, um, Ms. Walker and I, between trash and water, we have just had to become experts about this to better serve our, our residents. Because there is a reason why the sewerage part is not automatically reduced and we've had to work with the city so they can tell us when they do a reduction and we know that they're reducing it. So there is a reason why, um, it's not ad- automatically, uh, deducted. Uh, Councilmember Jones, I know we've worked on a number, or Chairman Jones, we've worked on a number of cases, um, with businesses and other folks that had this, this issue. It's about where the water goes. Where they go to the sewer.
Yeah, I to- I totally understand that and I, I certainly understand why there's the difference between the county and the city and to me it does make sense. What I was referring to, I guess to be specific, uh, we have another, uh, home and it's in a small, uh, subdivision. And if our water runs, let's say, two days with, you know, the high rate, we get a call from them and saying that, you know, you're using a lot of water, what is going on? And then, uh, we're able to, to stop it. And both cases have been situations where there have been leaks. And, uh, so I'm sure that technology is there. But of course I know we're talking about, you know, where, where I'm talking about is probably 5,000 houses or le- fewer as opposed to the number of houses we have in Baltimore County and cities. So, uh, it would be nice if someday we could offer such a service because I think environmentally it would be smart, very smart environmentally and secondly would save people, uh, some money. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, Councilman Catch, um, to your point, let me just say that I believe it was bill nine dash 19 that I introduced and, uh, was passed by the council. Back at that time, prior to that time, people had 60 days to appeal their sewer bill. And in many cases, people would not know what their sewer bill was until a bank did an escrow analysis because Baltimore City sends you quarterly or monthly water bills. And we would not give you your sewer bill until on your tax record. A lot of people would not know that they had an exorbitant amount. So then when they found out they had an exorbitant amount because a bank would do a escrow analysis and say, by the way, your taxes went up a thousand dollars, you owe us this amount of money per month. And by the way, we're going to increase your payments even more in anticipation of a future increase because we don't know that it's not going to happen again. And it would put people in a very bad, uh, situation. And to be quite frank, uh, I'm not blaming this administration, but, uh, citizens were not getting the type of response that I think they should have received or the consideration. So we passed a bill that allows them, number one, to be able to appeal their sewer bills up through February of the following year.
Mm-hmm.
Whereas before they were getting straight out denials because they missed the deadline. And number two, requiring the department to give us a re- annual report on how many people applied or asked for some type of relief and what was the disposition. So that if we find that people are not being treated fairly because we're talking about people's homes here, we're talking about some people could possibly lose their home if you raised their, their mortgage, uh, a couple of hundred dollars, it could have some devastating effect. So we require an annual report of how many people request consideration and what the result is, and we keep a close eye on that to make sure that we are not somehow turning everyone down. Because it is not our purpose to make people lose their homes.
Exactly.
Any additional questions or comments? All right. Now let's move on to RL Johnson Asphalt Paving and Seal Coating, Snow Removal, Deicing Services.
So, sir, I included that one when I did ABS, ASB.
Okay, fantastic. What about, uh, an amendment to BFI contract?
Okay, so the administration is the administration is requesting an amendment to a contract with BFI Waste Services to extend the contract's existing commercial municipal solid waste transfer arrangements at the county's Western Acceptance Facility. The other one was for the Eastern. Um, the proposed extension is necessary while we, uh, continue to work on updating our solid waste management contracts. Uh, this amendment extends the contract through the early date on which the county has executed a new contract of June 30th, 2024. Again, this is a contract, um, that is a revenue generating contract for the county. Um, and I will take any questions that you may have.
Any questions or comments from the members? And, uh, okay, so, uh, the old contract expired and we extended it through 2024. Okay. Okay, uh. The only thing I'm going to add on the BFI contract, I want us to make sure that we're cognizant of companies that have reported that they are somehow being mistreated by our BFI and BFI is using our transfer station. I guess want to make sure we're not, that we keep that somewhere along the line, give people some relief, I guess. Uh, but moving right along to page 54. Robert Half International.
Yes, sir. The administration is requesting retroactive approval of a contract with Robert Half International in which, uh, they provided two full-time temporary staff to conduct the data analysis and review of the water and sewer bill and information for county households and building business accounts. Um, this contract commenced July 1st and continued through August 31st. And our compensation on this contract, uh, that we paid was $25,880. This is, this contract is the contract that we used when we were talking earlier, earlier with, with the councilmen about using the services for extra staff to call to analyze bills that have a large jump in, in those services. We hired, um, temporary staff from Robert Half and, um, this is the contract for that. So we're asking for retroactive approval uh, for that contract that we had to do, um, this past July.
Any questions or comments from the members?
I have a question, Chair.
Councilman Erdo?
Um, so this contract, will this go forward into this year? And we, we had another uh, item about Raftellus that was doing some analysis. Is that
Right.
replacing this or what, what are we doing here?
So it's two separate services. Raftellus is going out in the field and looking at meters that we that's not working right.
Okay, that's.
These two people we hired on a temporary basis because we had so many bills that we wanted to analyze by a certain time to figure out why their water rates had exceeded a certain amount over the previous year. And we went over our amount that's reportable. I should have stayed under $25,000 and I went over. So I have to report it. So it's a, it's a retroactive contract.
Yeah, I thought it was pretty close, 880. Okay. Uh, any, uh, questions or comments? Okay, we'll move right on, Ms. DeAndrea Walker. We're back to page 57. Resolution 4822. Baltimore County Water Supply and Sewerage Plan.
All right, the administration is asking for approval of Resolution 4822, which amends our Baltimore County Water and Sewer, All right, the administration is asking for approval of Resolution forty-eight twenty-two, which amends our Baltimore County Water and Sewer uh, Water Supply and Sewerage Plan. Amendments to this plan are made annually and on some cases on an emergency basis in accordance with executive orders of April eleventh nineteen ninety, July twenty-second twenty-two, two thousand and three, and August twenty-eighth, two thousand and nine. For reference, on July twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, the planning board held and advertised a public hearing on the requests for the amendments to the plan and reported the results of the hearing to the county executive. That time, the Departments of Environmental Protection and Sustainability, Public Works and Transportation and Planning, and the Planning Board reviewed the request and offered recommendations, and offered recommendations. The Planning Board approved, approval occurred on September first, twenty twenty-two. The county executive then reviewed the proposed amendments, and hence, we submitted them here to council for approval. The amendments, as requested, to the plan are as follows. Nine thousand North Point Road, Todd's Inheritance, the current designation is W dash five and S dash five, and the proposed designation is W dash one, S dash three, and we also have ten twenty-one Carol Island Road, CP Crane. Um, and that current designation is W dash seven, S dash seven, and the proposed designation is W dash one and S dash one. We also have ten twenty-one Carol Island Road, another CP Crane with a different designation, W dash seven, S dash seven, proposed change to W dash three and S dash three. And then we have nineteen thirty-five Back River Neck Road, which is the Rocky Point Golf Course. The current designation is W dash seven, S dash seven, and it is proposed to be changed to W dash three, S dash three. We, the last one we have is sixty-two fifty-nine Dave's Cove Road, which is the Eastern Sanitary Landfill. And no revisions to the water and sewer map designations on this one. For note, this resolution shall take effect from the day of its passage by the county council. I'll take any questions that you may have.
We have a speaker, but, uh, first, we'll start off with the question by Councilman Marks.
Well, thank you very much. Um, and, uh, the administration knows I'm going to say this. I will be offering an amendment to, uh, strike, uh, ten twenty-one Carol Island Road. Uh, both, um, both amendments from this consideration at the council meeting next week. Um, in my opinion, the Baltimore County Planning Board, um, acted wrongly in supporting this at this time. Uh, there were, um, dozens of people who came to that planning board hearing. I did not hear one resident speak in favor of extending water to these properties at this time. Um, I think everyone wants a very deliberative, um, and engaged, uh, process between the owner of CP Crane and the community. I do wanna thank the owner for, for doing that so far. Uh, but in my opinion, um, these two amendments should not move forward at this time. I am in support of the amendment for sixty-two fifty-nine Days Cove Road, uh, which is also my district. Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions or comments? Uh, why don't we hear from, uh, Mr. Ken Mills? You're muted, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I am here really more as a resource uh, to you and your fellow council members and staff, if there are any questions as it may relate to nineteen thirty-five Back River Neck Road, which is the, uh, Rocky Point Golf Course property, which is a part of the larger, um, Baltimore County Wreckin Parks Park Facility, in the middle of the area. And, um, just here, if there's any, are there any questions, specific questions, uh, that anyone, uh, might have? Mr. Crandall has had, uh, several conversations with us and with staff. We spent a lot of time uh, with planning staff, uh, to try to come up with, uh, I think, a position that would be acceptable uh, to the community and to those that have been involved in this. And just wanna be available i- if there are any questions.
Okay, any questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chairman, uh,
Councilman Catch?
Yes, I have a question for Director Walker. Is that in order now?
Sure.
Yeah, okay, good. Uh, Director Walker, uh, I ha- I have constituents on Hollow Road in Cockeysville off of Sherwood Road. I don't know if you know. Do you know where that is? You don't know all the roads in Baltimore County? Gee. The residents along Hollow Road, by petition, uh, requested, uh, public water and sewage. And, uh, only a portion of the people who live on that road are gonna get public water and sewage. Uh, from what I understand, the rest of them live outside the Erdle, and that is why they won't, uh, get it. It, would this bill be the proper vehicle for me to add Hollow Road uh, as a potential for public water for the remaining homes on that road, which have wells that are, uh, saturated with salt from Baltimore County, salting the roads? I mean, this is, for the new members of the council, I mean, you're gonna, well, I don't know, you, i- if you have any rural areas, you'll know exactly what I'm talking about. It's a real problem. But, uh, would this be the proper vehicle, uh, Director Walker?
The, yes, sir. This amendment process, so we will start Cycle Forty-One's amendment process, I think, in February, but I can give you those dates.
Okay, so does that mean that amending this bill will get the process started?
No, sir. Not amending this bill. There, there, the executive order requires that the petition comes to us by a date certain in time, and then it goes through the public hearing process with the planning board and the whole nine. And that whole process for Cycle Forty-One, this is Cycle Forty, starts, I believe, in February.
But the petition has been done. It was submitted, and as I said, only a portion of the homes on Hollow Road, uh, are gonna get the public water. The rest are not. Because I understand that the rest are outside the Erdle. I just need some guidance as to what to do to, uh, uh, see if we can get the ones who are not being served with public water hooked up to the system that's already being, uh, installed.
Right. I do know that a petition was, uh, submitted, but the petition to change the designation of the Erdle, of how, uh, we go outside the Erdle, is a different, it's this process. So, I can, I can schedule a meeting with you if you will, if you
Oh, yeah.
To go over that.
I'd, I'd like to, and, and, uh, abs- absolutely. Uh, will you call my office, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments? There are none. Let me take a look at where we are. Let's move on to page fifty-nine, Resolution forty-nine dash twenty-two. Medical Waste Facility.
Sir, um, the administration is asking for approval of Resolution forty-nine twenty-two. To adopt an amendment to our Baltimore County Solid Waste Management Plan for Daniel's Sharp's Medical Waste Facility. The COMA requires the county to include language in our county's ten-year solid waste management plan regarding the installation or extension of a solid waste acceptance facility or disposal system. Um, this resolution would amend that plan to have, uh, Daniels included as a part of that. So, just for some background, Daniel's Sharp Smart, um, plans to open a privately financed transportation processing and treatment facility for the disposal of medical waste in Rosedale. Um, they will also warehouse and distribute, um, reusable containers to healthcare facilities. Uh, reusable container, the reusable containers will be processed through the operation, cleaned, and ultimately redistributed back to the health, uh, care facility. The medical waste, of course, will be treated on site, uh, and then transported to an off-site, uh, permanent landfill. Um, the department is supporting this because it will reduce plastic and cardboard waste by eliminating the single-use containers. Uh, for further reference, the planning board held a public hearing, uh, on this amendment September first, twenty twenty-two, and the board approved the amendment on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. And there was also, uh, a public comment period through October sixth, twenty twenty-two. And for further information, uh, a copy of the Medical Waste Facility Amendment, uh, to the Baltimore County Solid Waste Management Plan, along with a copy of this resolution, will be submitted to the Maryland Department of Environment upon, uh, council's execution. And the resolution shall take effect, uh, from the date of passage by council. I'll take any questions that you may have.
Any questions or comments from the members?
I have one, Mr. Chair. Sorry.
No, that's okay. Councilman Erdel.
Is this, uh, what do we, are we merely adopting whether this facility can exist? Or are we fini- we're not financing this?
No, it's, no, sir, we're not financing it. Just based on COMA, any facility that does any disposal of any type has to be a part of our ten-year solid waste plan. So, uh, no, we're not financing it. It's a private entity. But any disposal has to come through our ten-year solid waste plan.
And Councilman Crandall, are you, you're aware of all this? It's your district, I believe.
Councilman Crandall had to step away.
Oh.
At another engagement.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry. Okay, any additional questions or comments? All right, now I take it. Let me see, let me see. Took care of that. Uh, Mr. Boswick, do you wanna queue up our public hearing?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Um, as part of, uh, Resolution fifty dash twenty-two, which Mr. Lichens from, who is the director of DEPS, will testify about, uh, uh, as to the, uh, adoption of Baltimore County's Financial Assurance Plan, uh, it is also required that a public hearing be held as part of, as part of that. Um, so, uh, this is the public hearing portion of that. Um, Ms. Bel Castro, do we, do we have any speakers on the public hearing?
No, Mr. Secretary, we did not have anyone register for Resolution fifty dash twenty-two.
That being the case, uh, Mr. Chairman, you may, uh, adjourn the hearing.
Okay, I will give, uh, Director Lichens an opportunity to say anything if he liked.
Sure, um, Resolution, Resolution fifty dash twenty-two, um, Chairman Jones and members of the council is for Baltimore County's Financial Assurance Plan. Uh, what that is, Baltimore County is required to submit a biennial, every-two-year financial assurance plan under the Watership Protection Restoration Program, uh, at the state level. So this is a program that was passed by the state legislature, if you recall, when Governor Hogan first came in. And he was against the rain tax and ran against the rain tax. So the legislature passed the ability for, um, MS four permates, counties and, and other jurisdictions that had MS four permits, to get rid of the required stormwater remediation fee or rain tax. And so, at that time, Baltimore County did in fact pass that law. But what the state also said was, you had to file every two years a financial assurance plan to explain how much money you were spending and what programs you were doing to fulfill your MS four obligations. The MS four permit is a five-year permit, but they didn't wanna wait five years to find out that you weren't doing what you're supposed to do. So they were making you file this every two years to show how much money you were spending and what, um, projects you were doing to fulfill your MS four obligations. So we have been filing this every two years since then. And as Mr. Boswick said, it is required that we have a public hearing, is required that the county council pass, uh, this resolution. It is required then that either the county executive or the county administrative officer sign it or certify it, and then we need to get it down to MDE by December thirty-first. Again, we do this every two years. It's a little duplicative, because we also file with MDE everything that we do um, on an annual basis towards our MS four permit, but this is fulfilling that legislation.
Okay, thank you very much for the explanation. Uh, and any additional questions or comments from any of the members before we adjourn? I know it's been a long day, and especially knowing that we had meetings prior to this meeting. But I wanna thank everybody for their patience and attention, and, uh, everyone have yourself a wonderful evening.